I'd like to call the order of meeting of the Oak Ridge Board of Education. If you would please join me as Wildcat Company presents our colors and then we will pledge the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Lay, would you ask Chief and the cadets to come back in here for a minute, please? Chief and I were talking out in the lobby and I told him that I was glad to see they had changed the name of the Oak Ridge to the Navy Junior ROTC Gazette. If you've been keeping up with these young ladies and gentlemen, a lot of great things are going on in our Navy Junior ROTC program. Great leadership from Chief and Commander and from our student officers as well. And I know we've just got a small representation of the entire company here with us today, but maybe if you would, you can take back our thanks from the Board of Education for everything that you're doing, the great things you're doing, and the recognition you're bringing not only to Oak Ridge High School but to the community as well. So we thank you for that. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, please cast your vote. I'm having a momentary bit of difficulty here. There we go. Agenda passes unanimously. Next, we move to special reports and presentations. First item is good news. Ms. Webb, we'll start with you.
Okay, I have good news from Robertsville. Scott Smith, librarian at Robertsville Middle School, participated in a panel discussion at the International Board for Books for Young Peoples Regional Conference in Nashville on March 5th. Nicole Robinson-Hamilton of Ingram's, author Ruda Sepdie, and Mr. Smith discussed the graphic novel adaptation of the bestselling and award-winning historical novel Between Shades of Grey.
Mr. Stevens.
I have the pleasure of Oak Ridge High. Oak Ridge High School was awarded a Volunteer Award of Excellence for volunteering over 30,000 hours during the pandemic school year of 2020 to 2021. Three Oak Ridge High School juniors were selected from a pool of over 650 applicants to participate in the 2022 Tennessee Governor's School for the Arts. Seven sophomore were accepted to the Governor's School of the Arts, Engineering, Science, and International Studies. Five visual art students were selected and awarded scholarships to attend Governor's School for the Arts this summer. Bravo. The 2021-2022 Oak Log won the following awards from the Tennessee High School Press Association at Lipscomb University. Second place, Yearbook, Best Club Organization, Rolling on Through COVID is the article. Second place, Yearbook, Best Academic Design, Rolling on Four Wheels. Third place, Yearbook, Best Student Life Design, Tacky and Wacky Christmas Sweaters. And those are at least about three wonderful items from Oak Ridge High, and there's more.
Ms. McLean.
Okay. The National Honor Society, or NASSP, announced that an Oak Ridge High School senior, Epec O'Scann, has been selected as one of this year's NHS Scholarship semifinalists and will receive a scholarship award of $3,200. Eighteen Oak Ridge High School students have advanced and are going to the HOSA State Leadership Conference, March 28 through 30. This is preparing students for careers in healthcare and leadership while exposing them to professionals already in the healthcare industry. Also, Oak Ridge High School Health Science students received certification in Stop the Bleed on Wednesday, March 9. These students were equipped to respond in a life-threatening situation.
Ms. Agel.
Also from Oak Ridge High School, on March 9 through 12, the Oak Ridge High School Wildbots, Team 4265 Robotics, went to the Anderson, South Carolina Electric City Regional, placed first, and won the Chairman's Award, which is the highest award given in first robotics. So they are now going to Houston for Worlds.
And you'll come back with another excellent report after that, correct?
I'm sure I will.
My good news comes from Willowbrook. Willowbrook 3rd and 4th grade students traveled to Oak Ridge High School to watch Into the Woods. We appreciate Mr. Marino and Ms. Lloyd for this opportunity for students to learn about the theater and about opportunities they will have at Oak Ridge High School. 3rd grade students had the opportunity to learn from LDA Engineering McKenzie Martin. They used the Enviro-nscape model as they learned how pollution's impact freshwater in our community. ASAP of Anderson County presented to the after-school program about how to be safe and the dangers of taking prescription medications. Six Willowbrook students graduated from Math, ELA, All-Corp tutoring program this term. Also, there were seven students who had perfect attendance for the term. Willowbrook PTO hosted Spring Fling, a family-student dance on March 9. Over 90 families attended for a fun evening of celebrating their children. And that's just some of the good news taking place in the Oak Ridge schools. Next, we'll move on. This is an indication that we always look forward to, to really tell us that it's beginning for us as a board, budget time. So we have two salary proposals that we'll hear tonight, one from OREA and one from the principals. So we're going to start out with ORE salary presentation. Mike?
Do you need me to sign in? Okay.
I've got you signed in right here. And I'm taking notes.
We've done this long enough, right? Good evening, Board. Thank you for having us. It's good to see you as always. Dr. Borchers, Dr. Williams, Mr. Lay, good to see you as always. Having a board meeting the first day back from spring break is not the best idea, but just for future reference. It's been a rough couple of years for all of us involved in public education, and as always, the employees of Oak Ridge Schools have risen to the challenge and done an amazing job educating our students and sticking up for our community. We have you to thank for that, but we also have you to thank for the support, but our employees deserve all of the recognition that they, a lot of recognition for the work that they've done. So for those of you watching on TV, thank you, employees. You've done great. Keep it up. So our ask this year is not much different from our ask in the last couple of years. We're asking for all eligible personnel to be moved up on their respective pay scales by one experience increment. We're asking for the base salary of Oak Ridge School staff to increase by 3%. And we're asking for a leave of absence for bereavement days, three of those. And I have some rationale behind that. So nearly 76% of our staff members are eligible for a step increase on their salary scale. So moving those 76% up will be a great help, and that is part of our salary scale. Also, for those 24% who are topped out, we're asking for all employees, but especially those 24%, for a 3% raise, because that will benefit them the most. Some research I've done, according to Pew Research Center, the Consumer Price Index, which is the most widely used indicator of inflation, has increased 7% from December 2020 to December 2021. And the Bureau of Labor Statistics shows that for the southeast region, sorry, the rate is even higher. Data shows the south region inflation has increased by 8.4% from February 2021 to February 2023. The past two years, Oak Ridge Education Association has requested 5% increase for all of staff. Staff have received 2.5% and 1.1% in those two years. And that averages out to 1.67% over three years. As you can see by the inflation percentage over the last two years, that 1.67% has really not kept up. So nearly 25% of our staff, as I said, has topped out on the salary schedules, and that's 185 employees, to put it in real numbers. And those 185 employees represent some of our most veteran staff members. To show just how dire some of that circumstances have been, and not blaming the lack of pay raises on this, but this is some more statistics. 142 district staff members have left from the end of school year 2020 until the end of calendar year 2021. That's almost 19% of our staff. Of those, it breaks down to 47 teachers have retired or resigned, 42 teaching assistants have retired or resigned, four principals or assistant principals have retired or resigned, five administrative assistants, and that covers the people who work in our front office, who work directly with our principals, and people who work behind the scenes, as well as three counselors or cadres have retired or resigned. That's 101 people we've lost in less than three years. That says a lot to me because people don't leave this district, because we are an amazing place to work. I wanted to put those statistics in front of you because they were kind of shocking to me to see that. I know that COVID had a lot to do with that. I also know that the stress that teachers and TAs have been under has had a lot to do with that as well, from the people that I've talked to in the schools. That's what's been reported to me. I think providing a 3% pay raise will help to tell those people who are in the schools, and remember, the pay raise that I asked for doesn't just go to teachers, it goes to all of our district employees. When I speak for, I speak for members and non-members alike, from teachers to TAs to custodians, to everybody who works under the umbrella of Oak Ridge Schools who's not a contractor. Providing a 3% raise will do a lot to say, "We support you. We know how tough it's been, and we thank you for the work that you've been doing." The other ask that we've asked for for the last couple of years has been some bereavement leave. Last couple of years have again proven to be very difficult. We've had people who have been new to the district, who've had to take off for bereavement to death of loved ones. We've had people who have topped out, used up their sick leave due to quarantines or other factors, who've had to take off for bereavement. This isn't affecting a lot of people, but it is affecting a few. And for comparison's sake, as you can see, the Oak Ridge is one of the few surrounding districts that does not provide staff with bereavement leave on the death of immediate family member. Anderson County, Clinton City, Knox County, Sevier County, you can see what they have there. And I've also just been informed that there's a law in works from the Tennessee Legislature that would like to legalize or mandate that districts do this, but from what I've been told, it's not very substantial. So a little bit more would be very helpful, especially since we have people from all over the country working in this district and who have family from far away. So again, I thank you for your time, and I thank you for the support that you provide for us, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Much appreciated. Dr. Borchers, Will, and I think we've done this in the past, you'll send us some information, how this would impact, this particular request would possibly impact the budget going forward?
We can absolutely do that, and then when we do have the actual recommendation, we'll spell all of that out in a PowerPoint presentation as well.
Good. Okay, moving on next to the principal's salary proposal.
Good evening. I did check to make sure I could see over the podium before I started tonight. Thank you, guys, for having us up here tonight and for considering our input for something so important as salary. I just want to begin by saying thank you to Dr. Borchers, our executive team leaders, and certainly you all, our school board, for the many ways you continue to support the teachers, administrators, and most importantly, our students. The growth we're making in Oak Ridge City Schools right now can be felt and seen throughout the district. I feel confident in saying that Oak Ridge Schools is leading the way on some very important work, and our students and community will be better for it. So how strange it is to be living through a time in history that you know you'll be able to go back and tell your grandkids and kids about not only surviving through it but flourishing through it. And I think that that's going to be the tale of Oak Ridge Schools through COVID. I think many of us thought this year we would be able to walk back into the school and resume normal, and how shocked we were, because it's been anything but. I would think that our teachers, administrators have continued to provide incredible care, tireless support, and first-class service to all of our community this year. Again, I just want to say thank you for allowing us to share our thoughts on our compensation model. A few years ago, we worked through LeanFrog and found a really viable, sustainable way of compensating our employees throughout Oak Ridge City Schools. And while I feel like the work behind that was phenomenal, I don't think that it could have anticipated the inflation that we're all experiencing now. With that said, that's hit every single one of us in the pocketbook, from housing costs to costs to our gas, to groceries, as we all know. We definitely support the proposal provided this evening by OREA. It is very clear that our teaching staff has gone above and beyond in so many ways over the past two years especially, things like new curriculum, new expectations around PLC work, continuing to support students and families during COVID, even through this year, and all while maintaining a level of professionalism and positivity that's rarely seen. The work our teachers and support staff have done is just nothing short of incredible right now. We are truly getting better and getting better. So with that said, our proposal is for a 1.5% step, 1.5% increase in our step. We think that that's reflective of our current economic climate and sustainable for future years, which is a critical component when we're considering budget season. So thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you mentioning LeanFrog because that has taken us into resolving some inappropriate financial situations that we were dealing with, and hopefully that's getting us to the right track where things are balanced as they should be. It has made a difference in what we're doing to support our staff as they should be supported. You know, it's hard as we go through this process. We've been fortunate that we've had some influx of money through the ESR money that's helped us do some things that we wouldn't have been able to do had it not been for that funding. Without a doubt, and this board understands this without question, that we have the hardest working, most productive teaching staff and administrative staff in any school district in the state of Tennessee. That goes without saying. And to, and it is a reward for what you do. Those who think coming into the teaching or administrative position of operating a school think it's easy, you've seen people come in and say, "Well, I can do this." Well, it takes individuals who have a very special talent to do it, and we are grateful for that, but most of all, our students are grateful for it because they're the ones that benefit. So we will take under consideration, as we do, your presentation, and as we move forward within our budget, we hope at the end we'll be able to come with a productive document that will help us to continue to grow and to continue to provide those opportunities that we are providing for our students on a daily basis. So thank you for that. Any comments from any other board members? Okay, moving on, the next item is our public forum. Public forum is for anyone who would like to address a topic that is not on the agenda. You may address a topic that is on the agenda when it is presented. If you wish to do so, please raise your hand to be recognized. If you choose to address the board now and then, you will have three minutes to speak. The board may or may not respond to your comments, or may have the superintendent address your concerns. When you speak, please come to the podium and sign in, and then state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board at this time? Hearing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Webb. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to items for action. The first is the selection of the Oak Ridge Schools Volunteer of the Year. We ask our schools to submit names of individuals who helped their respective schools through a variety of tasks during the school year, and now it is incumbent on the board to select one of those that we've seen throughout the year to be selected as our Volunteer of the Year, and we will then submit that name to the Tennessee School Board Association, and hopefully that volunteer will be recognized at this year's Fall District Meeting, and then hopefully go on to receive state recognition. You did hear me mention at the last meeting that we're going to change the method of how we do this next year, and more information will be coming to you later on. We have four nominees this year, and they are Elizabeth Reagan, who's a volunteer at Oak Ridge High School, Christine Mounts, who is a volunteer at Linden, Pedro Gonzalez, who is a volunteer at Willowbrook, and Jake Greer, who is a volunteer at Robertsville. So I would ask the board to cast your vote for one of those, and then pass your ballot down to Dr. Borchers. Please fold it one time and pass your ballot down to Dr. Borchers. And we'll have a brief interlude here while the superintendent is counting the votes. And hopefully, when he makes the announcement, there will be no reaction from anyone in the audience as there was at the Academy Awards last night.
Okay, our winner is Jake Greer.
Jake Greer, all right. Let's give Jake a round of applause. I will contact him, but if you would also, and we will need, Lynn will get the information to you that you will need to fill out, and as specific as you can be in this, because their TSBA is going to really look at specifically what they do, not that they were a wonderful person and they came every day and volunteered, but specifically the things that he has done. Okay? Okay? Very good. All right. Okay. Yes. So, we would need a motion on the floor to select Jake Greer from Robertsville Middle School as the Oak Ridge Schools Volunteer of the Year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Is yours frozen too? I don't know what it is with me and computers lately here. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next item is approval of the FY23 non-resident tuition rates. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 non-resident tuition rates.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
I know the board has the memo from Ms. Van Dyke, and I mentioned this morning, I appreciate how she laid this out. We always have a question of our history of open enrollments and non-tuition, or non-resident tuition students, so you have that in front of you. And then, on the back of that sheet, page two, you'll have the rates, and then in the box, I thought was very helpful, how all those calculations were made. And again, this is something we do every year.
Comments or questions from the board? I know we talked about this, I think maybe at our last meeting, and I can't get it up at the moment here to see it. How many tuition students do we have this year?
It looks like 95. Is that correct?
I think it's in there, but...
And we've been on a steady increase for the last five or six years, so...
Okay, motion on the floor is approval of the FY23 non-resident tuition rates. Please cast your vote. I'm back on again live here. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the preschool Head Start Grant and Budget. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the preschool Head Start Grant and Budget.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
And as the board knows, the next four items are all preschool and all things that we do every year, but that doesn't mean it's easy and it was easy to get these things done. So, and Ms. Downard is here if there's questions on all four of these items, but this particular item, the amount requested in the grant is $881,672. The basic grant amount is $872,775, and the train and teacher assistant is $8,897 of this total number here. And this grant provides funding for 118 three- and four-year-old students.
Comments or questions from the board? Anything you would like to add to this? You've done all your work before it got to us, and we thank you for that. Okay, the motion on the floor is approval of the preschool Head Start Grant and Budget. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the preschool Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the preschool Head Start Training and Technical Assistance Grant.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
And this was mentioned just in our previous item. This is for $8,897, and the items specified in the plan are based on results from the Community Assessment and Self-Assessment and support the Head Start Grant Board goals.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item E is the preschool selection criteria for pre-K Title I and Head Start. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the preschool selection criteria for 2022, 2023.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
As the board can see, the attachments lay out the criteria with which we will select and qualify students for our voluntary pre-K and Head Start programs. This also assists in creating a waitlist prioritized by level of need for both programs.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item F, FY23 Preschool Voluntary Pre-K Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY23 Preschool Voluntary Pre-K Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
And again, as the board knows, this grant has traditionally provided funding for five pre-K classrooms that provide services to 100 four-year-old students.
Comments or questions from the board?
That was for the previous grant. So, 118 for the previous grant, Ms. Downard, 100 for this, yeah.
Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item G, FY22 Best for All District Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Best for All District Grants to provide updated and innovative technology solutions for students.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
This new grant will allow us for the purchase of a needed additional technology for students, and some of the examples include interactive projection tools for elementary physical education spaces, student presentation equipment at ORHS, and replacement of student devices totaling
Comments or questions? I think you sent this information to us, but do you remember how many districts out of the state received this? I don't remember. Do any of y'all remember?
Don't.
I mean, it wasn't every district, for sure, and it wasn't even half of the districts.
Right. That seems accurate.
I'm thinking it was 40 or something.
Yeah, off the top of my head, I...
Yeah. So, it was, applying was important, but receiving the grant, this, it's important to point out, this wasn't given to everybody.
No, no, we had to meet certain criteria, and luckily enough, we did that, and we made sure we did, Dr. Williams made sure we did, so that this was possible.
Okay. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next, item H, FY22 Fiscal Pre-Monitoring Supports Grant. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Fiscal Pre-Monitoring Supports Grant.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
This is the night of grants, obviously.
That's, no, let's keep that happening.
Keep going here.
Let's keep that going.
This is to assist us with contracting with a professional vendor, either a CPA or law firm, to do the following: review current written policies to further strengthen and ensure alignment between written policies and daily practice; test internal controls for material weaknesses in procurement standards; and then ensure compliance with all program and expenditure requirements of ESER 1, 2, and 3. So, we'll take this help.
Comments or questions? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. You know, to your comment, Dr. Borchers, the grant approval has been a consistent item or items on our agenda for quite some time. And for those who think all you have to do is apply and fill out a one-page application, they are very sorely mistaken, and it takes a lot of time and effort. Plus, when you fill out the application, you have to document why you should receive this grant. So, for those who are making and taking the time to do this, these grants are making a difference in our school district. So, we're appreciative of those people who are doing it, Dr. Williams and others, so we can do these things that we wouldn't otherwise perhaps, again, be able to do. Okay, item J, Purchase of Replacement Fleet Vehicle. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of a 2022 Ford Explorer from National Auto Fleet Group for the sum of $49,129.94.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see from Mr. Thacker's memo there, the purchase will replace fleet vehicle S5, a 2011 Dodge Caravan, that has reached its scheduled replacement life and has exceeded the recommended mileage for its intended service.
Comments or questions? Alan, I would bet that our vehicles not only exceed, but go somewhat past the recommended mileage. Would I be correct? And that, again, indicates that we do a good job of keeping them maintained so we can use them and get that extended mileage out of them, but stay safe at the same time.
And that's challenged.
Yeah, I understand. Comments or questions? Motion on the floor is the purchase of a replacement fleet vehicle. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the purchase of cafeteria equipment. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of cafeteria equipment in the amount of $27,936.45.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. McLean. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see there, we're recommending approving this bid for microwave steamer ovens, shelving, and food storage, pans and lids for three cafeteria locations. The low bid met all required specifications.
Comments or questions? Ms. McLean.
So, will this be installed while we're doing the upgrades to the, to those cafeterias over the summer?
That's a good question. I've got two people that can probably tell me as they confer back there.
Yeah, Alan gets to talk all the time. We'll let Jen do this one.
The units themselves are portable, and as soon as we, as soon as we get them, we can install them right away. The units themselves will cut our time in cooking by about six minutes per pan and also eliminates like steam burn risk, and it's less expensive for maintenance for the district because we won't have to hook it, hook them to a water source. So, a normal steamer costs anywhere between $16,000 to $25,000. So, this is a less expensive option as well.
So, when you get ready to test them out, we'll volunteer to come over and...
Sure. We currently have one at Glenwood that we've been testing out for several months, so we got a chance to try one out before going, moving forward.
So, Mr. Ward was reaping the benefits of that and didn't invite us to come out. Thank you. Other questions while she's up here? Thank you. Thank you. Motion on the floor is the purchase of cafeteria equipment. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item K is the purchase of new line panels for Oak Ridge High School and Secret City Academy. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the approval of the purchase 113 new line boards for ORHS and SCA in the amount of $291,427 even.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion? Motion made by Ms. McLean, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
So, we're recommending that we take this bid, and it's coming out of ESER 3.0.
Comments or questions? Ms. Agel.
What are new line panels? Those are the interactive, for lack of a better word, TVs that are now hanging on the walls in our K8.
Please cast your vote for the motion on the floor, the purchase of new line panels for Oak Ridge High School and Secret City Academy. Motion passes unanimously. Item L is the purchase of Laguna Fiber Laser Cutting Machine for the I-School Program. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the purchase of a Laguna Fiber Laser Cutting Machine from Laguna Tools Incorporated in the amount of $127,980 for the I-School Program.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Motion made by Ms. Agel, seconded by Mr. Stevens. Dr. Borchers.
This is quite the machine. I did do some Googling. We had an executive committee meeting this morning, and I said, "What is this?" So, I did some Googling. It's quite an impressive machine. It's a robotic, basically, laser cutter, fiber cutter that can do so many amazing things. I can't wait to see Dr. Buckner and the kids use the machine, but it's very impressive, and again, available to us because of the grant that we won.
Comments or questions from the board? Hearing none, please cast your vote on the motion, purchase of the Laguna Fiber Laser Motion passes unanimously. Item M is the FY22 Budget Transfer Number Four. This is a first reading on this item. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the FY22 Budget Transfer Number Four.
Per the superintendent's recommendation, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Agel. Dr. Borchers.
As you can see from the memo, I'll go through a few of these. This adjustment has some mid-year adjustments and realignment of general fund salary and benefits, some additional funds for JMS and RMS marquee signs based on the bid results, funds for maintenance and operations due to increased prices and additional needs for other projects, and projected bleacher purchase for baseball as well, as some other routine budget transfers and revisions.
All right, motion on the floor is approval of FY22 Budget Transfer Number Four on first reading. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item N is the remodel of the Woodland, Jefferson, and Robertsville Cafeterias. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the Proposal Services LLC for the remodel of Woodland, Jefferson, and Robertsville Cafeterias not to exceed $98,000.
Per the superintendent's motion or recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Move for approval.
Well, that, that would be Ms. McLean made, and Ms. Webb seconded. Dr. Borchers.
Yeah, Dr. Thacker. Alan, you want to give us a general overview of what's going to be done in these three
I appreciate the promotion, you're the doctor.
You are the doctor of making some operations.
What we're looking at is some kitchens that have basically needing some updates. The ceilings are being hit with the, some rust, so we end up seeing some issues with the, health inspectors is marking on those. So, we're going to replace the ceilings with upgraded ceiling tiles that meet the requirements for kitchens. Woodland will have new flooring put in to match all the other floors in the kitchens. Right now, it has VCT tile, which can be very slippery for our employees, and will be replaced with a quarry tile, which is much easier to maintain. It also has asbestos glue under those tiles, so that will be abated as part of this process, and that's part of the cost. Lighting, HVAC, vents, and things that need to be replaced. Uh, lighting, HVAC, uh, vents, and things that need to be replaced just to bring those areas up to, uh, a current standard for kitchens.
When I was reading this, and correct me, I've, I've done a different, a lot of different things since I read this, but i- in the bid, it said they would bring it up to where they actually did the cleaning and brought it back to a res- did I read that in there or am I dreaming that?
They will actually, uh, this is a turnkey job, so they'll actually do all the demo work and do all the cleanup afterwards, so we should be able to walk out of that without having to do any additional work. And with our current workload, that's going to be handy.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah, other questions while Alan's up here? Ms. McLean.
So, is this going to happen in the summertime?
That is our schedule.
Okay.
Thank you, Alan. Motion on the floor is the remodel of the Woodland, Jefferson, and Robertsville Cafeterias. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Next item bor- is a, item O, board policy six point two oh six, transfers within the system, a first and second reading. Dr. Borchers.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of board policy six point two zero six, transfers within the system.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Motion made by Mr. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Webb. Dr. Borchers.
Uh, as the board knows, uh, public chapter four seventy-nine requires districts to make changes to their open enrollment policies and practices. So, what you're seeing here is taking exactly what they said we needed to do and putting it into policy. So, there are some changes there in red to our open enrollment, uh, policy that, uh, is up for the review for the board, and it should be noted that there's talk in the general assembly as well right now that they want to do this so it could happen between school districts, so basically, open enrollment between school districts as well. So, that's getting discussed in addition to these changes.
Come answer questions from the board. Ms. Agel.
I have one question on the first page, line fifteen. It is scratched out that if granted, the student must provide his or her own transportation. Does this mean that if students transfer between schools within the district, we have to provide that transportation?
Now, you want to clarify that, Mr. Lee?
Yes, if you will look at line twenty-two, it says that bas- basically, once accepted, the student shall provide his or own, uh, his, her own transportation to and from school. So, basically, they, they're just in a different location. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Ms. McLean.
So, we have to get out our crystal ball in April to know how many spots we're going to have open when school starts in July.
Mr. Lee, you want to explain the process that we're using right now?
Yes, of course. This is a new process, okay? But basically, we have taken and we have promoted all the students this year, kindergarten, first, first to second, and, and, and moving forward. And then, we've taken the standard, for instance, in a K three, K through three classroom, the standard classroom size is twenty, and we basically have reduced that by five. When you get the grades, uh, four, five, and six, then it is twenty-five. We have reduced that to twenty. So, we basically have taken in the number of teachers that we currently have at that grade, or even if we're projecting how many teachers we would have in that grade next year, and we are multiplying it by that number of the standard reduced by five. So, for instance, if we have four second grade teachers, we're saying, okay, we will accept sixty students, even though legally we can have eighty. We feel like that that growth of reducing by five will give us the room that we can accommodate new growth coming to our district, and then we're just looking at what we currently have. So, if we're saying we will accept si- uh, you know, we're, we're looking at sixty this time. If we have seventy students currently, then there's no openings. If we have fifty-eight students, then we have two openings. So, we're being very cautious. We're keeping enough seats open to make sure that we have the room for growth. And then, I'm also sharing this with our principals. Uh, I've sent them my numbers based simply on a calculation of enrollment and number of teachers. Then, they will look at any other information they have. Uh, we could have a group of students at some grade related just to have a high special needs group, and we need to keep that number lower. So, we're working together to basically create a number of available seats that both the principals and myself that we're very comfortable with, so.
So, I know in the past, we have, with the cross boundary, we have had an expectation that the student be a good citizen. Is that still going to be into play or, or no longer?
According to this policy, we cannot look at attendance, academic performance, um, and, and discipline on the front end. Uh, and, and we have done that in the past. If a student did not have a good, um, record, then basically, we did not approve the cross boundary request. But this does remove the option of looking at that on the front end. However, it does allow us, once a student has been approved for a cross boundary, if they exhibit difficulties in academic performance, attendance, discipline at that point, they, they lose the privilege to stay at that school. So, so basically, it does a better job of giving a student a fresh start, uh, and, and, and we go from there, and, and we'll monitor and see what happens. Uh, we have looked at this, you know, students who are currently on a cross boundary, and they're at that school, they already have that history, so we may look at that a little bit different if they're already there on a cross boundary, so.
What has been the average number of our cross, generally, of our cross boundary transfers?
I'm going to yield to Dr. Henderson and hope she has that number. I know at Jefferson alone, the day I asked that question, it was fifty-two. I think we had fifty-two cross boundary students at Jefferson Middle School alone, so it was higher than I had anticipated.
Yeah, I think our numbers fluctuate, and they are high, um, based on people moving in to different areas and also looking at, um, the things at the schools that are offered. So, we're, our numbers are kind of, it's like a moving target. Uh, and it does not help that we have new families moving in, and they're already asking for cross boundary, not even knowing the schools yet. So, that's some of the problems that we're going to have to try to work our way through as we get these, uh, this new law or policy into place.
So, if I cross boundary and spend a, uh, I live in a district where I would go to, or in an area where I would go to that school, but I cross bounder, uh, my student cross boundaries out, and then, then at the end of that school year, can my student cross, come back to the district where I live after a year in that school?
So, in other words, if you live on one side of Oak Ridge and you do a cross boundary to the other side, you want to come back to the, yes, but, but we'll have to look at those numbers. That's going to be one of the things Mr. Lee and I will be watching along with the, the schools, because what we have to remember, and I try to tell parents this as they're coming in, we have four or five major housing developments coming in, so we have no clue what's going to walk in over the summer. Uh, I've been keeping an eye on, what is it, the loft, the lofts that are right behind the, uh, police department. Right now, we have one student, uh, that I, I'm aware of, and that's a high school student, so that one doesn't hurt us that much. But I also found out that the two and three bedroom apartments are getting ready to be finished, and that's where I'm looking for the landslide when those are finished. But we had two families from, um, one from Colorado and one from California that came in today, um, filling out information to enroll. They are in zone, but they had been looking, uh, at other schools and everything within our district.
So, if I cross boundary, I have to stay there a school year. Is that correct?
Yes.
I can't come back in the middle of the year, back over to the other side?
Not according to this new policy.
I've got, according to that, I got to stay there a year.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Dr. Borchers mentioned this, and this could really be a nightmare, I think. If the legislators decide that this is going to be opened up to out-of-district students, then we're going to really have to think through this.
Right.
Because, and, you know, it could be anything. They, the law could say that if we take the student from another district, that the, whatever money they bring with them comes to us. Am I correct? I think I'm correct on that.
That's our, our current thinking at this point.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, if their per pu- the money per pupil.
Mm-huh.
I should have clarified that. So, if they're, this, numbers that don't mean anything other than numbers. If their per pupil is five thousand and our per pupil is six thousand, they come with five thousand.
Right.
We really don't want that to happen.
At that point, would our tuition not apply?
Not according to the way the law is written on the onset. Now, that obviously, as you well know, can change, but on the onset, no. They don't come as tuition students. They just come out of district if we have spots.
Mm-huh.
Which we have, would have to aver- according to that law.
Mm-huh.
That's not passed yet in some form. Hopefully, it won't be in any form, but, uh, they come, we have to advertise that we have a space for two students in the third grade at Willowbrook.
Right.
And they would have to come to Willowbrook. They couldn't say, we're coming, but we don't want to go to Willowbrook. We want to go to Glenwood. They couldn't do that.
No, no.
They'd have to come where we advertise that space.
Right.
So, contact your legislators. We don't want that to occur.
Right.
We wouldn't. Tuition would go away. Let me say that again. Contact our legislators. We do not want that to happen. Now, well, we don't. No school district in their right mind would want it to happen, in my opinion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And as a follow-up, I will ask Dr. Henderson tomorrow to send you an email with how many cross boundary students we have at each of our schools. That way, you'll have an idea on that exact number.
But as you said, that, that's a moving target, the way things are going now. It's.
Yes, yes.
You could send that out tomorrow, and then the next day, send us another. It could be completely different.
That's right. That's right. And the way the housing is going up and they're getting things finished, we, I mean, we, we can't say, we could say we've got two spaces open at, let's say, Glenwood, and then, as they close on houses, we don't have those two spaces because we've got two in-district kids that are right there now. So, it'd be a moving target for Mr. Lee too, when we start looking at those numbers. Yes.
Well, the good part of it is the influx of new students and families we're getting.
Right.
That's the good part of it. Now, if we're, have to deal with the bad part of it, we'll deal with it, and it could bring about some, uh, changes as we've talked about, not only as we think about the need for a new school, but the need to shift our boundaries a little bit.
Yes. Yeah, we've discussed that a little bit too as well.
Let's hope we don't have to discuss it a lot. But we, I mean, it's out there.
It, it is.
It is.
It is, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other comments or questions from the board? Motion on the floor is board policy six point two zero six, transfers within the system. Please cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we move on to, uh, items for information, enrollment and attendance reports, and if you want to say a word about the document, Mr. Lee, you handed to us on the spring intercession, feel free to do that as well.
Okay, thank you. That sounds good. And on enrollment, uh, the good news continues. Uh, if you compare our enrollment this month compared to this month last year, uh, we have one-hundred-and-sixty-four more students. Uh, that's a little bit misleading. Fifty-one of those students would be our preschool, okay? It still gives us a growth of one-hundred-and-thirteen students, and, and I, and I know this is a redundant statement, but I will continue to state that we have enrolled a lot of new students, but we've also had a lot of students trans out of, transfer out of Oak Ridge Schools. And if we hadn't had that balance, uh, this could be a very different conversation. So, um, the growth continues, the major growth continues to be at Linden Elementary. Uh, they are up seventy students this month compared to this month last year. Uh, your next largest growth would be, would be Willowbrook, and then, then Jefferson Middle School would be the next. So, those three schools have basically, uh, had the greatest growth in comparison to this time last year. So, so that is positive news for us. Uh, what I did hand you was a report, uh, from our intercession, and, and sometimes we hear the spring break and we think everyone's on vacation, and they're not, okay? Um, just wanted to give you a general idea in, of what was happening. In the past, we had a lot more enrichment, uh, once again, because of our mandates and expectations for summer school and using intercession as part of our summer school. Uh, basically, we have had more of an ELA mathematics theme, but also, there were some other things going on, and, and the schools definitely made it fun. Uh, the good news is we had four-hundred-and-twenty-five students participate in our intercession, which is a great number. That also included fifty staff members in, um, uh, in, in what Mr. Corvella had said early, earlier about, you know, COVID, it's been a, it's been, I won't use the word tough, but it's been a different couple of years. Uh, and what is wonderful is we have continued to grow and exceed during this time, and, and I'm, I'm very proud of that fact. But to have fifty staff members, given all the challenges that COVID has presented, and they're still willing to give up their time to work intercession, I just appreciate those staff members and our administrators and everything that we continue to do for our students. So, any questions?
Thank you. Next is the financial report. Any questions there or any comments, Ms. Van Dyck? Remember what I said last time? That's all, that's a good report. No comments. Okay, uh, any old business or new business? Communications, uh, first, a couple of reminders. On April the sixth, uh, board will do a board visit to maintenance, but that board visit will take place in this room, starting in, at eight-thirty, I believe, eight-thirty. On April the twelfth is the next, uh, data meeting, and that's, is going to start at eight-thirty as well, uh, April the twelfth. April the twentieth is our visit to IT, and I, I assume that's going to be here as well at eight-thirty. And then, on April twenty-fifth, uh, is our April board meeting. Also, I would mention to the board, and if you'd like to discuss this, certainly, let's do that. Uh, as, as we're trying to keep up with the new funding formula, uh, and again, Dr. Borchers, uh, we appreciate, uh, the deluge of information that you send us, which you're getting, but that's important as we try to keep up and get, wrap our hands, arms around what's going on. Uh, I, I feel that, uh, as a board, we're supportive of a new funding formula, but I think also, as a board, we probably won't, want that funding formula to be done correctly. Unlike, and I use this as one example, the testing model, which we still haven't gotten right yet, uh, we don't want to, on this funding formula, because of its great importance to all schools, we don't want to have to deal with trial and error going through to try to get the right mechanism to fund all of our school districts. So, Ms. Agel and I were talking, and Dr. Borchers and I have talked, I would like to draft a letter, uh, to our representatives, including, uh, Speaker of the House, supporting the funding formula and the need for a new funding formula, but also to express our caution that. caution that it's important to make sure it's done correctly, to get all of the questions answered, uh, in a language that all can understand, uh, and send that, uh, this week, because it's getting closer to make the decision whether they're going to vote on something or send it on to summer study and come back and vote on it next year. So, uh, I would suggest, I'll work on this. I would send the letter to each board member. Let you use your red pen or pencil and add or mark it out, and then send it back, and we will, would email it, uh, with all of our names, uh, before this weekend. So, that's my thinking. Comments or questions or additions to do that?
I am strongly supportive of that and would, I would even go so far as to request that it go to summer study, because I don't think they can answer all the questions in the next two weeks, which is when they're, the rest of the session is planned to be. I, I think there are some positive things that they have put in the new formula, but there are also some things that concern me, and I, I agree that the, trying to hurry up and get it wrong would be worse than putting it off another year.
Okay, I'll work on that and get it to you, try to get it to you, uh, sometime tomorrow. Dr. Borchers, I'll send you a copy as well for your comments, uh, to that. Anything else, Dr. Borchers?
No, we're, we're ready and, uh, refreshed for now and, and, uh, ready for this next nine weeks. We're looking forward to it.
And keep in mind, graduation is a little earlier this year, so graduation is about eight weeks out or so. So, that is a whoa, yes. May twentieth, yeah, so. All right. Travis and Dave, thank you for keeping us online with our millions of viewers back there. Lynn, thank you for all that you do to keep us straight and on the narrow path, and thank each of you for taking your time to be with us tonight. We stand adjourned.